All right, first of all, communications announcements received by the board. Yes, excuse me, Mr. Ruben.
A point of order.
Yes.
In the, it's my understanding that under the agenda as mandated, I believe mandated by New York State law under the reorganization meeting, that as part of that, one of the committees, both committees, that we do have to make an assignment to the audit committee. And if that's, if that's, if it's the understanding of everybody else on that board, I'd like to move that we talk about assigning people to the audit committee now, given that second agenda that is that is circulated.
All right, Mrs. Kenny, Ms. Kenny, is there any problem with that? All right, well, why don't we, should we take another motion to see if that is acceptable to the board?
I'd like a motion and second to come back.
I'll second a motion.
Special voting meeting.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Okay, all right.
I move the appointment of the audit committee up on the agenda.
To, yes, not the other committees, just the audit committees.
Second on that?
Uh, Mrs. Selma, all right, all right.
It's in favor to bring it up on the agenda.
Okay, uh, we need another motion to bring it up?
No.
Okay.
A vote on this one.
All right, okay, on the audit committee then.
Do you feel that?
Is anyone in favor? Is anyone in favor?
Yes, is everyone in favor? Opposed? Abstention?
Dr. Rizki, can I get a vote?
Please put your vote back here.
All right.
I would assume that you'd be asking now for anybody who's interested in volunteering. And I might add, I might add that since, as with all committees, since the president is an ex officio member of every committee, in order to keep any committee meeting under the level of five board members, I would believe that the most we could be looking for is three, am I correct? Yeah, three board members are being nominated for the audit committee.
Yes, I did want to mention that not only do we have board members on the committees, we also have community members, and therefore, for the information of the new board members and community members who might be interested, I think it would be helpful if we indicate how often these committees tend to meet and whether they meet evening or the data. Mr. Rubens, would you share that information about the audit committee? Those people know before they volunteer. Yes, Mrs. Kenny.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Ms. Hardeman is online, however, she has not turned on her video.
She needs to have her camera on. She can't participate as a figure.
There you go, good job, Colin.
All right.
If you, if she needs to talk, then you're going to have to. Colin, you can hear us, okay?
I can hear you this fine.
All right, all right.
Last year, the audit committee met quarterly, we met, we met in the evening for everybody's convenience, and pretty much anybody from the public who was, anybody in the public who was interested just kind of gave us a resume that they liked to be on it, so that they, the three of us were sitting at the table, we came out, there's no limit to the net number of people from the public who've been attending.
Okay, thank you. All right, who would like to serve on the audit committee from the board? Very good, we have three. Thank you. All right, can we, shall we now proceed to the agenda as it was for the special board meeting? All right, all right, first of all, communications announcements received by the Board of Education. I'll try to start at one end of the table, one meeting, and then alternate which ends by start at, so you want to start down there? Mr. Selma, anything? Mr. Ruben?
I had a pleasure of attending the Van Leech Junior High School movie update, John Thoreau's retirement party, the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new bus garage with physical claims, those were very nice. The graduations from the Ketchum High School, John Day High School, Fortune High School, and what else? Very nice also was Dasterville Elementary School, I had a poetry reading, and it was done very well. Who does propose to?
Dr. Rizki.
Hi, Kenny, the John J., uh, and Orchard graduation. I would like to congratulate all the students for their hard work and achievements, and I would like to thank them and teachers for their support and encouragement. Thank you.
Karen, Mrs. Parat.
Thank you, I, I have no comments, thank you very much though.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Mrs. Parat.
I'd like to thank the community for being here tonight, and let's consider their patience. I'd like to thank them for the opportunity to serve on the board. The, the district is bound by the regulations of the New York State Department of Education and education laws and legislation. The board is freely elected by the people to serve the people, and we're not appointed by, like I said, we're not appointed by the commissioner, we're not appointed by the legislature, we're elected to serve the community, most importantly, the children. And I am hoping that this board is going to do all that we can to hear from the community, respond to the community, engage the community that has put us here for that very purpose. Obviously, within the confines of the regulations, but there's so much that we can share with the community, hear from the community, and, and focus on the children, again, who we've been elected to serve, and I just hope that that's what will be the legacy of this work. Thank you.
Mr. Lumia?
First of all, to congratulate two nominees for the board. I also attended the Ruben-Cottin ceremony, I'd like to thank the Limeberg Architects for putting up plans exceptional, and Retisicon, the builder, we have a state-of-the-art bus garage. We can light up buses, we can paint our buses, we can do everything that could never done in the past, so I'd like to thank them, and particularly, Mr. Ross, who's kept everything at Phase One under budget, when very few changes, Phase One again under budget. And the Phase Two project is on budget. Again, for anyone with nothing but a bus garage, if you take a, take a visit with her, I was quite impressed, and you'll be impressed also, where it finally has something that we should be proud of. That's it, thank you.
I'd just like to add that I attended all the same things that Mr. Ruben and Mr. Lumia attended, and also the senior awards at RC Ketchum, which they also attended. We were so busy, they obviously, the things flipped our minds.
I'm pleased to be here.
Oh, good, Colleen, please share.
I'd like to stand up to you, I just want to recognize that Mr. Kenny, by all coordinating with us. Am I correct? I wanted to thank her for her service for many years, patient at work, and we appreciate her whole support, conflict, and her future to the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. All right, we now have comments from the public. At the beginning of, we have two public comments here, at the beginning of the meeting, the comments should all be related to items on the agenda, and when you come up, please state your name and include your remarks in three minutes, so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. We allow 30 minutes for that. If you have something else you would like to say, we have a period at the end of the meeting, when you're also welcome to come up, again, state your name and try to keep it within three minutes, so that other people have a turn. Thank you. All right, if you want to speak now to an item on the agenda, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board of Education members, members of the community, my name is Ed Slowshell. Congratulations to the Gatehead community for raising over $30,000 for the American Heart Association, and to Joe Pennant for being selected as a National League Gold Star. This is Mr. Bravo, he's no longer a board member, I believe this particular issue extends from this complaint. I ask that when comments are made by the public, that board members be recognized by name if the comment directly relates to any comments he or she has made. This nonsense that took place last year that a board member could not be mentioned by name was ridiculous. There is no policy in record that pertains to this procedure, in my opinion, all comments from the board and for the public need to be challenged if it's deemed necessary, and those who made those comments need to be identified. I want to welcome our two new board members and our six returning board members for the 15, 16 school year. As we begin this new year, our district continues to face many challenges, some that are old and many that are new. One area of grave concern for me is once again the failure of the board last year to abide by its own district policies. In review of last year's board meetings as well as decisions made by this board, I found that the board had violated these policies on numerous occasions throughout the school year. Some policies violated the Section 1000 community relations, such as 2000 governance and operations, Section 6000 fiscal management, this is the name of here. Agenda item 4.03, I would once again like to make the following recommendations to the new board for consideration. The formation of a Legislative Action Committee which consists of parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and possibly students to work with our local politicians to address unfunded mandates that continue to cripple this district. A Budget Committee consisting of community members, parents, and teachers and administrators to review our existing budget and help with any recommendations for proposed budgets moving forward. The Capital Improvement Committee to give monthly updates on the progress of all work to the community. The formation of a Long Term Planning Committee to address existing and potential future residential development that may have an effect on class size and enrollment throughout the district. This committee will work hand in hand with all planning boards in each town that is within the district boundaries. Citizens Advisory Committee has per existing district policy. The scheduling of public hearings to address the concerns of parents, teachers, all district employees, and community members at large, prior to any board thoughts with regards to common core, budgets, taxes, school curriculum, bullying, drug abuse, conditions of our athletic fields, employee working conditions, and any other issues deemed a concern to the taxpayers and employees of this district. It is my sincere hope that this new leadership of this district will realize that this community is your greatest asset, and that returning board members have learned from many mistakes made last year. I hope that this new board will address these many issues, since this is what we've had to run their campaign on. This new board needs to work in an effective collaborative manner with parents, teachers, students, administrators, and the community at large, to address the many issues currently facing us as a school district. And remember that our students and children come first, and that is the most important thing.
Any other members of the public who should rest the board? In that case, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Superintendent's report. Mr. Carry on.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, good evening, everyone. I also would like to say that special congratulations to all of our high school graduates. There were three very successful ceremonies that we attended, essential office dancing. In addition to that, I am going to put my Assistant Superintendent on the spot, Janet Woodan, who will be leaving our district, and I just want to take this opportunity to share with you that you have been a tremendous asset to this district, you're a great professional peer, and a great friend, and we wish you all a lot with your future endeavors. Congratulations, thank you. And lastly, we have moved into 25th Corporate Drive, and this is our new office building. As you've probably heard our former president talk about the space, it is very tight in there, and we're trying to get ourselves accommodated. We're definitely still working on packing and making sure that we can get all of our offices with adequate space and adequate accommodations in terms of our file cabinets. But what we do look forward is to really make it a child centered area where all of our teachers and our administrators will be able to convene together for a professional development purpose and do everything that is right, and continue to do the right things for all of our students here in the district. Thank you.
The next item is adopt the school. In the last few years, board members have adopted certain schools that they would like to visit. Since we have a district of 15 schools, not all board members are able to visit all of them. As your board president, I certainly will make every effort to visit every one of them, and I know some other board members also visit all of them each year, but those, some people may choose to concentrate on some schools rather than try to spread themselves too thin. So, again, if we could go along and find out which schools you would like to adopt, and we'll put it down. All right, Mrs. Kara?
Yes, hi, I have a question, are you asking for one suggestion from each of us, or one?
However many schools you think would be convenient for you to visit in the course of the year. And you can change it if you'd like, Colleen.
Okay, I would like to have Ketchum and Dunday.
Thank you. I would like to retain Fishkill, Landry, and Bregerhoff. Fishkill and Bregerhoff, thank you.
Oh, you should not do the case?
Uh, no, you can do the case, you can do as many or as few as you think is the best to visit.
And, and you're not limited to those?
Oh, no, not at all, you're always welcome at all the schools, just, just, no, let the principal know if he's going to put you on the tour.
Hold on, I, I, I can?
Yes.
Colleen, yeah.
Colleen.
Could we, uh, school by school to be sure that someone announced every school?
Yes.
Rather than take away, remember by board members?
Well, I. Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll pick them up at the end if any schools are neglected, I'm sure we'll pick them up. Would you have a choice of some schools, Colleen, at this point?
I think I'll, I'll stick with the schools that I have, were Fishkill, Warfurnier, and Dunday.
Thank you. Okay, and? I would choose Dunday, okay, uh, Benwick, and, and, thank you. Mrs. Lumia?
Chief, Washington High, I see K, Oak.
We didn't put you past me, I'm sorry.
Chief, Washington High, I see K, Oak, and East Conference.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Selma?
All group in Bushland, my district.
Mr. Ruben?
Well, just like last year, as the trustee, I view myself as a trustee who was elected by the entire district, and who's supposed to serve that entire district, and our district would like to continue adopting laws of all the schools with the hat.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rizki?
I would vote for John, John J., Fishkill Elementary, and, uh, Reddick, and, and, excuse me, Miss, last one?
John Boy. Okay, right, thank you. Yes, certainly, the people can add more. Mrs. Parat? Myers? Then, and, uh, Julia, of the Myers.
What about Colleen?
Colleen, did you want to add anything? Uh, she has Fishkill, Washington.
Fishkill mentioned several places, from Fishkill to Evans, it didn't sound like there were many mentions of Evans.
Evans, all right. Okay. Mrs. Kara, you'll do what? Bregerhoff? Yes, if anybody wants to continue, I go to all of those, and in addition, Mr. Ruben and I go to all of them, so they won't be completely neglected, but if anybody else wants to add one of those in addition. You want to go for Archer, Fish? Okay, and you're not limited to these schools by any means, so anybody who, you know, would like to go to one of the others, the board has informed the special events with the different schools, and we try to get to as many as possible. Of course, some people, not everybody's retired the way Mr. Ruben and I are, so a lot of people have to, you know, work it into their work schedule. Yes, thank you. All right, committees, we already took care of the audit committee. Another committee is the Policy Committee, and if someone on the current Policy Committee person could give us everyone an idea of how often they meet and when, Mr. Lumia. Would you like to tell them about the Policy Committee a little?
It depends on the availability of our board members, we try to meet at least a month a month. So, potential date determined by the availability.
Did you swim down or anything?
No, I have no specific date.
Okay, thank you. Will we have?
I have a specific date for the Capital Improvement Committee, the first Wednesday of each month at 10 o'clock, we'll be at the district office, every Wednesday, and get the public to come to that.
Thank you, all right, will we have some volunteers for the Policy Committee? The Personnel Committee. Can Mr. Lumia, could you explain that, or would you like to, Mr. Carry on?
Might just share quickly, with the Personnel Committee, I think it's important that members are able to also participate in during the school day, because being part of the Personnel Committee and not being able to collaborate with teachers and parents and other building principals and other administrators and support staff, we really get a diverse group of committee members in the Personnel Committee, and really getting that insight and hearing what, from their perspective, what they have to say is really critical to being part of the team as you're making a recommendation for a candidate to continue and would follow it.
Thank you, so we have some volunteers, yes, Mr. Lumia, I'll just share some more information.
I must agree, Superintendent, there are people on this, on this table who work during the day. I think it's important the committee decides on that time, it's a thing for all of us, with me, committee view, prospective members. I think it should be in the future, take time, that means that some of us, I'm retired, I can go anytime, but a lot of, a lot of us cannot, so I think the Personnel Committee should decide on the time, point of duty, that's my opinion, the board is to be there.
Uh, yes, Dr. Rizki?
If I do want to be a part of this National Committee, I should make an announcement right now, or just?
No, just don't raise your hand.
Because I won't be this early.
No, it's new, it's new, or, this year, that's fine. All right, who would like to be on the Personnel Committee?
Could you just give a favor and name some people, so that I know who they are?
All right, certainly, okay, Audit Committee was Selma, Ann, and Rob, I'm sorry, Mr. Selma, Mrs. Parat, and Mr. Ruben. Policy Committee, Dr. Rizki, Mrs. Kara, and Mr. Lumia. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Parat, Mr. Lumia, and Mrs. Felton. Yes, Mr. Ruben?
I believe that if these, I'd like to make an amendment, a motion to amend this, that there, I believe there should be these two other committees addressed at this point, Capital Improvement Committee?
Uh, they're, they're, they're next on the list.
Okay, then I take that back, right?
Okay, all right, the next one is the Public Relations Committee. Okay, just to, we had met in the evening, we did not meet every month, but that, we have, okay, so who would like to?
Colleen.
Okay, Colleen, Mrs. Hardeman, Mr. Ruben, and, and Dr. Rizki, and Mrs. Parat, we have to get it down to three, I'm sorry. Okay, is there anybody who? Uh, Mrs. Hardeman hasn't taken any committee yet, so I kind of think that maybe we should give her a first chance on that, is that all right, Mrs. Hardeman? Since she didn't take any others, is that all right with you, Mr. Ruben, Dr. Rizki, and Mrs. Kara? And maybe the three of you could decide which two want to do this? Because I have you each on another committee, of course, you're quite welcome to be on another committee. What? That we put two of those?
I'm just putting it up on one vote, one by one.
All right, why don't we first see about the Capital Improvement Committee, and then we'll come back to this, and that might make it a little easier. Capital Improvement Committee, as Mr. Lumia just said, they meet the first Wednesday. Who would like to be on that? You can be on more than one committee. Okay, okay, that's Mr. Lumia, Mr. Ruben. And we can have one more, and Mrs. Felton. Okay, to go back? Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Ruben. Okay, the Public Relations is Mrs. Hardeman, Mrs. Kara, and Dr. Rizki. Now, is there any discussion about other committees, does anyone see a need for another committee at this point, or do you want to think about it? We can bring it up all we have in the meeting. Okay, all right. We have some suggestions, and perhaps we can vote on what we want to do, some of these other committees. Please go to the rest of the list again, I know this is down, and if anyone would like to make a motion for one of these committees, please do so, I've read the list. Legislative Action Committee, Budget, if I can, uh, I'm going to read them all first, and then you can pick which five you want to write motions on, that somebody might, you have forgotten one of them, but we just want to do the list. Legislative Action Committee, Budget Committee, Long Term Planning Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion for one of those, or of those, one of those committees? Yes, Mr. Lumia. Legislative Action Committee, would anyone like to second that? Okay, Mrs. Parat, how many people are in favor of the Legislative Action Committee?
I would like to ask a question on that.
Yes.
Well, I would say that before this, I would like to suggest that before the Legislative Action Committee be spoken about here, I would like to see more of a, um... I would like to see more of a, um, what the scope of this committee would be, the direction of this committee, uh, what, what would be its purpose and how it would act.
I think if we do approve, it would not be a setting it up as a committee yet, but exploratory, so some people on the board could look into that. Would that be a good idea?
Well, and what you're suggesting is that the board, uh, that certain members, if I can read you correctly, that the board, uh, uh, review this and then come up with, and just as we did with the DAFC, what the scope of this committee would be, who would comprise, what direction would be.
Yes, exactly. Uh, just as we had a charter for the district facilities advisory committee, we would have a charter, and so, uh, we'd have to have some people who would serve on that. Okay, did we, we got our motion and did we get a second on that? So let's say that, yes, we have second for Mrs. Karas. Alright, how many people are in favor of exploring this, uh, legislative action committee? And Mrs. Hardeman, how do you feel?
She's ready to say.
Very good, alright, so we had Mr. Hardeman, Mr. Rubin.
No, I haven't voted.
Oh, you didn't. Uh, Mr. Soma, sorry, Mr. Soma. Uh, Mrs. Karas, Mr. Julia, and myself, so that's, uh... Uh, okay. So, uh, perhaps we could have the people who, uh, express an interest, uh, need to explore the, uh, process of way this is set up, okay? Uh, that's it. Mr. Julia, Mr. Soma, Mrs. Karas. Mrs. Hardeman, if you'd like to. Those people. Right? Uh, so we have somebody kind of in charge of that. We need a chair, temporary chair, I guess? Mr. Julia, that's good. Alright, were there any other committees, somebody, anyone would like to propose at this time? Yes, Dr. Rizzi?
I don't know exactly the name, but I'm coming on this one kind of type standard common to advise you quality meetings. Is that possible? I would, uh, to do, uh, in one of, through one. Talk about making a guarantee, then call the group standard. I, I don't know the name, but maybe next time when it comes to this.
Okay, that's right. That's a question that would be like, maybe, that'd be good.
Guarantee.
Right, okay, so, thank you. Excuse me, Mrs. Gordon?
I ask Mrs. Gordon to speak.
Yes, Mrs. Gordon?
I'm having trouble hearing.
Could you, up to the mic?
She's, she's asking, what we, we both, would it be something that would be part of the legislative action committee? If we're talking about mandates and, um, the common core learning standards as well as part of mandates, so that's what she's asking. But we can definitely, as, as, um, the president indicated, that, uh, Trump, D. Rizzi can bring it next week.
I got, yeah. Yes, certainly, Mrs. Karas?
I think that there's a lot of other concerns with common core aside from the fact that it's legislative and what we would choose to do with regard to, to challenging or, or addressing legislation. And there's other legislation that the legislation committee, I assume, would address. I think there's a lot, um, and, and I would suggest that we see it limited to common core, but to the reform agenda in general, including the ACR, the assessments that are all tied together. Um, and that would be, that would be my suggestion. And we talk about the impact, um, and the implementation and the, uh, the entire work progress. And this does have tremendous impact on the community and the education system. And I think apart from the fact that it's legislative, there's a lot of issues that we need to address as a committee.
Yes, Mr. Rubin?
Mr. Superintendent, is this, uh, a board-level decision in your opinion? Or is this a curriculum-level decision at your level?
The, the question regarding curriculum, uh, in terms of our, our curriculum committee, we do have a curriculum committee and that we work with, um, the district. Uh, in terms of really discussing the region's reform agenda and really looking at all of the variables, as we heard Chris D. Vidal mention, and also Dr. Rizzi mentioned, I think that's a different component. Um, I do believe strongly that we really need to have the conversation about the region's reform agenda and really understand that that really is the umbrella word, common core is not the umbrella word, and that there's all these facets that fall under the region's reform agenda to really provide the community as well, um, to be extremely informative and indicate, um, what it is that we are talking about. But, um, I would also caution that way too many committees and looking at our strategic, um, planning, our strategic planning and what the board notification is going to decide for this school year in terms of what end results we're going to continue to accomplish and what goals we're going to continue to accomplish will have an effect in the committees or should really steer the committees in the, in the direction that we're moving forward. I would encourage that, um, if you have an empty opportunity to read the strategic plan and the end results and what we have to have, all these are public documents on our website. They would really have a significant impact on how we would move forward and what, what are we talking about? And what do we want to discuss as, as a community in terms of the region's reform agenda?
Yes, Dr. Rizzi? My point of view is that I would keep this legislative committee separate from what I'm talking about. And like Mr. Toneyon said, those lead to our different components. I would come up with some ideas next meeting. But I would like to keep it separate, legislative, and it is standard for what we're, we're going to do.
Uh, Mrs. Felton?
Um, Tina, if I'm understanding you correctly, um, from, on other conversations, I believe that your goal is to really help navigate through the higher standards in this situation that we're in, providing support for parents and her family and to bring the community in. It's not really about the mandate, it's about collaborating and, um, makes point to...
Yes.
And then go to Mrs. Karas. And then, uh, then that was brought up at the next, when you're ready, right? Uh, Mrs. Karas, did you want to also give input on that meeting? No, that's just... Okay, great. Alright, uh, well, I think we have some, um, amended, uh, additions, addendums to the consent agenda, uh, for, um, personnel. Uh, Mr. Rubin? No, Mrs. Julia? Who's going to give it? Mr. Rubin was, uh, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Number five, the consent agenda, yes? Oh, yes, that's what we're going to, I think, do we add, to put, add the addendum before we pull things, or we pull things and then add? I think, thank you. This is, you keep it on the straight now, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Rubin?
Uh, we found that the board of education has hereby approved the following consent agenda, as stated, six point zero one and addendum. I'm going to remove this. So I think if this, for me, to...
Are we, are we moving the people now?
Okay, that's why I thought I was going to do it, but I have, I have to say that.
Yes, okay, I mean, yes, we're asking, we're asking to ask if there was anything needed to be removed, okay? Yes, Mrs. Karas?
I'd like to pull six point oh eight.
Six point oh eight?
Six point, six number three?
Six point...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, six, two, three, three. Little value you got?
Yeah.
Mrs. Julia?
Six point oh three, number three.
Six point oh three, number three. Anyone else? Alright, now, do, uh, Miss Penny, do we add the addendums before the consent, uh, before we do this? Okay, fine. Yes, thank you.
We found that the board of education has hereby approved the following consent agenda, as stated, six point zero one and addendum, six point zero two and addendum. Six and then, move.
I thought the addendum was second, you're adding it? I'm, I think we need to discuss the addendum, so whatever I need to do.
Apparently you already discussed the addendum, I expect.
Okay, so does that mean it automatically is getting added to the addendum?
Unless you want to remove it.
I want to remove it.
Which one?
The addendum.
Or which? The, uh...
The probationary appointment.
So teaching staff? What is that?
All three of them.
So the teaching one, so six point oh two, addendum.
Not the teaching one, it's, uh, it's probation appointment to see administrator. Administrator, they say it falls on the same way.
So we just six point oh one and then six point oh two without the addendum?
We found that the board of education has hereby approved the following consent agenda, agenda, as stated, six point zero one and addendum, six point zero two without addendum, six point zero three without number three, six point zero four, six point zero five, six point zero six, six point zero seven, six point zero nine, six point one zero, six point one one, six point one two, six point one three, six point one four, six point one five, six point one six, six point one seven, and six point one eight.
I think six point oh five, number three, that was supposed to be called.
You said six point oh three, I mean, six, and then you changed to six point oh three, number three.
No, she did, I had, mine was six point oh five, number three.
Six point oh five, number three.
Number three.
Make that correction.
Susan, do I have to do it?
Make the correction. So it's six point oh five, number three, that you're pulling, Mr. Julia?
That's correct, Miss Penny, it's usual.
Alright, do we have a motion? Mr. Soma, second? Miss, uh, second, Mrs. Felton? All in favor? Okay? Right, okay, so we have six point zero two, the addendum. Mrs. Karas? Uh, it's, we need, we need a moment to discuss that, okay? Mr. Soma, make a motion? And a second? Mrs. Karas? Alright, all in favor? If we're not voting on it, we're just supposed to discuss it. So we had discussion before we vote on it, don't we? Yes, Mrs. Karas?
I guess, um, I'm just, two brand new board members. I know we had a few minutes to meet with, with the candidates, um, but I just think that, uh, that these are pretty significant positions for us to be voting on, especially with it is, um, access and time to consider the information. Uh, we are making the ultimate decision as to whether or not we're going to hire these people. And I just feel, um, that specifically with, um, candidates two and three, we, um, dear friends, to me, and I'm just, uh, I just don't feel like we've had the time to consider it. And I know that services of what has been across the country going on for a while, but there's a five that's making the decision. And so I just kind of want to go on record as saying, I think, um, it's, it's, I'm not supposed to vote on it, I think.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Oppose? Colleen has it, I'm going to. Oppose? Extending. Okay? Are you opposing or?
Extending.
Extending, thank you. Alright?
One more, sir, no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh, six point zero three, number three? Okay, alright, so that was definitely, that was perfect, alright. Six point, uh, zero five, number three?
Rob should read that.
Okay? Yes.
We found that the board of education has authorized the superintendent schools to sign the following consent agreement. Dr. Reynolds Thomas, Dr. R. Thomas.
Okay, Miss Felton?
I have one question, I know the, the MOC is not here, so it's a minute. But, is he here? Uh, question is, uh...
Do we have a motion? Mr. Soma, Beckett? Hey, Mrs. Felton? Mr. Rubin?
My question is, uh, we're paying to be on thirty-five hundred thousand neurological examination for people, because it's been one day examined, thirty-five hundred dollars. And only God to pay you, although we're forced to use some particular doctor to do the neurological evaluation. But they press out money, because of one test.
If you, uh...
Or battery test.
There's limited numbers of professionals who can perform these evaluations that's necessary, and thirty-five hundred dollars is actually a lower rate than some of them that are available. We have to do this every year, it's part of the IET process.
That's the same.
But there's certain requirements that these professionals have to hold in light of the most recent large evaluation.
Just a more information, that Dr. Rizzi, you are a medical doctor. Does it seem to be a problem? It's a mountain.
Yes, it's, uh, how much time they spend, like three thousand five hundred? For how many others?
I think it depends on how long the evaluation is.
Yeah.
But there must be some...
I mean, it's one hour, two hours, three hours, ten hours. Because six to eight, the fifty-five hundred thousand dollars is just a bunch.
But still, uh, the still positions they charge for the time, now there must be some time limit for me.
And this is a match receipt card, again, so if the time is not necessary, that they don't need to move.
But the reimbursement is by talent. The reimbursement, physicians get, there's a panic for reimbursement. There's always a time for reimbursement.
And if you stay sunny, so if they go, they will not cost more than thirty-five hundred dollars for the assessment.
The chances are, I think, the chances are, if I'm on the top, I'm afraid so. If they can, it's not, uh, an extremely high cost, but, um, in terms of a neurological evaluation and a neurological evaluation does take a significant amount of time. And it takes a significant amount of time to spending that on time with the child, but also with the family. It requires a lot of, um, a lot of attention hours put into, um, developing the result of a neurological evaluation.
Which is roughly how many hours?
Um, roughly how many hours? They can average from, I would say days sometimes. It's not even just about hours and days. Um, yes, it's a, it's a very intense evaluation. It's not what our school psychologists can do. And, um, I'm thinking back to when I was a principal, and I'm talking maybe fourteen years ago, when these prices are still very much more or less the same of what I remember spending second neurological evaluations costing.
If, if it's like days and days, then it's okay. It's not, we're talking about one day or something like that.
No, it's, it's, it's a very intense process for the child and the family.
More than one day? Yeah? It's more, my apologies, it's more than one day. I would draw my, uh, it's not just, uh, I thought it was one day. I thought, I just saw seventy, seventy, it's from seventy to ten eight. So I would draw my, uh...
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought.
My, my complaint.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Colleen, Colleen.
Uh, opposed? Alright, six point oh eight.
Uh, six point zero eight, resolved that the Board of Education has hereby approved the following hundred transfers as detailed in memo dated April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, May eleventh, twelve, two thousand fifteen, and June eleventh, eighteen, two thousand fifteen. From the school business manager to the superintendent of schools.
Uh, um, do we have a motion? Mr. Ruben, second. Mr. Selma, discussion. Mrs. Navarro?
I, I had two items that I was curious about. One is seventy thousand dollars for bothies to score the ELA and math exam. Wondering what this budgeted for? And, uh, what, I guess, percentage say, is this of the full recording? Do we anticipate continuing to outsource the tasks that is due to bothies? And is this a number, um, that we expect to see again? It's going up, it's going down? And again, always budgeted way, and we've had a source for this, for this.
Um, during the fourteen, fifteen, in past years, we've always had to cover the costs for our students, for our teachers leaving the building, who have cost substitutes, and that's been a significant expense to the district. Based on analysis done, it is actually a more efficient means to have the outsourced to bothies. It is able as an expense in the following year, and it is also, um, cheaper for us to do it whole time. So, when you ask if it's budgeted, yes, it's budgeted in the substitute line, and the memo indicates that the money is transferred from the substitute line to bothies line. In addition, we will have an aid in fifteen, sixteen years to reflect these expenses. So, if it's budgeted at bothies for fifteen, sixteen, when it's fourteen, fifteen, when the analysis is done, it's budgeted at substitute.
Do you know if this is supposed to be eight?
Bothies eight?
Are we getting bothies eight to outsource our...
Absolutely, yes, so we have certain expenditures from bothies, and we didn't receive eight on those items. Not on everything, but there are items that we didn't receive eight on.
Okay, and my other question was, um, there's thirty thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then close to seventy thousand. The description is to cover architect fees associated with the original plans for district office reallocation within district own space, uh, sometimes rented space.
Those are speaker, right. So, when the original work was being done on the district office, it was done within anticipation of and as part of the capital project, because until it was rejected by the voters, it was part of the capital project. So, when that was no longer the funding source, it had to be brought back into the general fund. So, these are the fees, everything associated with the district office became ownership of the general fund, it no longer could be included in the capital project. We confirm all of that with our terms. So, this transfer is to cover the cost that would have been absorbed by the capital project as part of the total purchase price of the three million dollars from the district office, but since that did not occur, the general fund taxed, taking on expenditures in the fourteen, fifteen school year.
Any other, any other questions? Alright, all in favor? And probably no, thank you. It's certainly, carry on.
When the personnel consent agenda is approved, you usually decide to recognize, um, administrators and teachers that if they approve, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Darren Wolkema, who will be our new assistant superintendent of the class and the music business. I would also like to introduce to you two new members to our team, Jessica Turner, our coordinator for elementary education. And also, Mrs. Karen Smith, our coordinator for special education.
Thank you. Uh, are there any requests for additions to the agenda? Mr. Ruben?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to put the following motion forth. Resolved that the Board of Education moved to sunset all committees not mandated by law, and to, to have those committees expire on June thirtieth of each year, henceforth.
Second? Mr. Selma, discussion? Mr. Ruben?
I think that, I think that it's important that each, that each committee be looked at an annual basis, uh, the committee is not mandated by law, I'm talking about, for the Board of Education to decide whether or not each committee should continue in each succeeding year. And if it's decided those committees should continue, then who should be on those committees? With that being said, I move to put that, uh, that the Board to consider this right now, that committees, that committees not mandated by law be sunsetted at the expiration of each, uh, board year unless they are receiving a charter that, uh, they, their, uh, term of life expires before that.
Mr. Vonnell?
I think there are circumstances where I think present, all four committees should stay in place until a new board takes control. Such circumstances have come up, which have to be addressed, and to wait until we're all ready to address them, those are the issues that make it bad for the district. So, I would like to see all committees terminated on the day of your reorganization meeting, but you committees have one. If you otherwise, I think it's settled. Regardless of the law states, it's, uh, it's, the Board decides what they want to do, regardless of what the state may say. I could be wrong in that, obviously, I'm probably wrong.
I might help with that. To expire at the, at the reorganization date. I'm sorry.
You say expire to the state's... I reacted on two things, but to expire on the date of the reo, of the following, of the subsequent reorganization.
Oh, I moved down a percent.
So, you're remending your motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need a second for the amendment? Mrs. Thompson? As for any further discussion? All in, and Mr. Carrie on, Mrs. Driscoll, this is the one.
If I could just say that, um, that when they do expire, um, so the policy committee would need to address that as soon as possible to ensure that in the resolution there would be an expiration date, and then after that, you would then decide to really, to reestablish that committee. Um, so it would be a different process than what we saw today, where, um, just automatically we started with the publications committee, the personnel committee, the capital improvement committee. We would, the Board would have to make a motion to bring back that committee before they even start, um, acquiring volunteers from the Board. That would have to be noted and articulated into the policy and regulation.
Uh, Driscoll?
No, I just want to understand what you're saying, that it's going to expire every year, and then we are going to be new, is that what you're talking about? Is that right?
Mrs. Navarro?
Can I just suggest that, um, we some implications here that we should consider, and maybe we should table this, and, uh, you know, consider what the implications really are before we adopt the, the policy, we have a whole year before, you know, you have to take this, so that we start discussing before we, before we implement it.
Do we have a second?
You'd have to put a motion to, uh, to amend, to table this.
Okay.
Just for clarification, this is not a call.
Okay.
This is a revolution.
Okay.
The policy, the policy that on committees, now that we have a policy number, we'll have to be revised. That's what Mr. Carrie was talking about.
A revolution to revise the policy?
We're not talking about a policy right now, we're talking about a revolution that Mr. Ruben had on the table. So, one goes for the other, but it's not on the table for the revolution. Are you on a policy committee?
No.
But we'll have to be put before the policy committee to revise our policy on committees.
Is that the motion?
No, motion is to sunset all committees that are not mandated by law at the reorganization.
I, I really, I'm very confused.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
It can't be cabled for the, to discuss that?
The motion that's on table.
That's my suggestion, that we cable the motion.
Do we have a second for the table?
We have a second, so we got, so now we have to have those on the motion and stage.
Alright, all in favor?
No, we're fully in, fully agree.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Abstain? Uh, Driscoll and, uh, uh, Miss Card, I thought it was abstain. And abstain. Send out a close to the policy committee. Alright, are there any other issues to the agenda? Yes, no? Uh, communications from the public, if anyone would like to speak now, please state your name and try to keep your remarks to three minutes maximum, thank you. Anyone?
Excellent, thank you. Legislative Action Committee, one quick comment, one hundred and three unfunded mandates is your starting point right there. I find it great that the names of all students printed in the Southern Duchess News. But, I'd like to know, how is it possible that the Southern Duchess News prints the names of all honor roll and graduating students before final exams and grades are in, and the school year is not even over? A neighbor came to me, uh, the night of graduation. I find this incomprehensible, that at a graduation opening up ceremony, that the district hands out a certificate of conclusion award to students with a spelling error. Does anyone prove this? What message is being sent to our children? Anyone can be an answer? TBIS, we received a grant to run this program, correct? The person who requested this grant and was the driving force behind it is leaving the district, correct? The head of the student support system is also leaving the district, correct? We can now discontinue this program now, correct? This program was started in the late nineteen eighties for teachers and for work, and for the working with special ed and students with disabilities on behavioral issues. In the last twenty-five years, this has become something else, and then now includes all children. The Technical Assistance Center on Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports is established by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Special Education Programs to define, develop, implement, and evaluate a multi-tiered approach to the technical assistance that improves the capacity of states, districts, and schools to establish, scale up, and sustain the TBIS framework. Emphasis is given to the impact of implementing TBIS on the social, emotional, and academic outcomes for students with disabilities. This is from the tbis.org homepage. Why is there a district-wide program when the focus of this is students with disabilities? I would like to see data that proves to me that this nonsense is making a difference with all students in the district. What are we doing to address the concerns that students have with this program? Or wait, they lose recess if they speak out against it? Teachers are being pulled from class during the day to go to TBIS training. Students are losing valuable time to learn because their teacher has gone from the classroom. How much of the teacher's time is being wasted on this program when they should be in the classroom or being with students? I hear more and more bullying stories, not less. I have many more examples, but not enough time to mention. I'd like to know some feedback, and have you received any feedback from students on this program? I have only heard, next to me, I've only heard negative comments from all students in class, one of them missing it. I would like to hear from board members on this program. Do any of you have a true understanding of what this is about and the impact on all students in the district? IBM and Global Boundaries have completed their transition this past month. IBM has a pilot agreement with the founder, East Fishville, which directly impacts the district. This agreement has now terminated due to the sale. This has a major impact on revenue for the district. Will Global Boundaries ask to extend this agreement, or will it remain the same? Will they ask for more concessions? Will they do nothing to pay the full assessed value? Who knows? It is extremely important that this board and administration be part of any discussion with Global Boundaries and the founder, East Fishville. I also would like to wish Sue Penny all the best in the time. I thank you for everything that you've done, and fortunately, a nice couple of friends are active with you. I've learned a lot, I wish you well, and I thank you for everything that you've done for this community, this school district, and every student in the last, what's that, maybe, however long it was. Thank you so much. I don't like to follow this slow shower, there's a case at the table now. Anyway, uh, I'm here to address the...
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name, please?
Um, Stephanie?
No, it's, it's just that, it's just that, you know, it helps us keep track of who said what, and we can get back to you if you have questions.
I think that's laughable, you don't exactly anybody about anything. So, again, if you want a name, I'd be happy to, 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 you know, we can contact you if somebody has yet to respond. I come here every month and, and, and ask where this scheming pile of equity is that I've been looking for. You know, we got rid of Martin's car, and we picked up a tear on the car. You know, promised more glass sizes, and two through six, more than, more now in the glass size. It's, it's just one, you know, we're talking about future things, and the, the things that we voted on here in March aren't done yet. Mr. Ruben, in the last two meetings, tried to read out the existing policy to have questions answered, and yet to see any evidence of any questions being answered here. So, that means to me, in my opinion, you should either consider the fact that, you know, words here have no weight whatsoever, I'm just saying, specifically reelection, because they clearly aren't taking attention to your questions. Or indeed, the answers to these questions are not anything that they want public. Nobody here is going to say, you know what? These audits questions will be smaller, or not. You know, the art is to have you, but not a computer to hold it. I mean, I can go on and on, I'll throw a good step and an accurate, I only have, you know, a little bit of my time here. I, I wonder if we'd say again, parents asked you to slow down and take a year to look at this. And it's asked you to slow down, you have a year to talk about expiring to leave. And again, what the Board likes to do is vote on something without any factor following, you know, really enough, so that seems to be the motive here. Couple of people, several, they were here, they never said a word, they just raised their hand and, you know, yeah, I motion that, that's, that's, I don't understand what's going on, that's all good. If, 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 if you're going to follow a, a form of a policy committee, my suggestion would be follow your policies, that you have it for this point. Does it make any sense to anybody? And I'd like to answer, maybe from our new president, these are actually the deep question and answer sessions here. But it's not, it's, it's discussed, and it's, and it's, it's a policy, and it's not being followed.
Very kind, you can have a question, you can have an action, you can have a proposal, you can't enjoy here. I was just looking through...
Could you state your name?
I'm Al, I'm Al.
Thank you.
Um, a twelve point ten, it says acting principal. From what I under, can understand, I assume that this was already a board? I just, I'm confused, it means we're not having a sub, because in my building, this all is about, and this oil is the acting principal, but a sub is still well-staffed, and therefore, it's the acting assistant. Diane Morty is not actually on the premises every day. She's in a module in the acting building that wasn't even notified till two o'clock, there was a bus stop at eight thirty in the morning. Makes me a little bit uncomfortable as an acting, no district supervisor, but just as an acting principal. I'm just confused to how this decision was made, and it just means we're not, are not getting a sub. When our principal's there.
I'll ask for that right now, because I've got time, so you can start. Um, this is my second neuro superintendent, and what I noticed in the organization was that there would never have an acting principal assigned. So, you make a very valid point, there's the difference between a substitute principal and an acting principal. An acting principal can come in, and it would be somebody who is staffed in our district, and who can act for the principal to take care of any item that may need to be addressed, that requires, um, some legal action, or possible legal action in the future. Um, therefore, the substitute principals and substitute assistant principals will continue to come into the building, but we will officially now, on record, have someone who will sign, because a substitute principal cannot sign, they are not acting as principal. And now, we will have somebody who officially can conduct, or can help with any issues, and, um, it's typically done in most districts, and it was observation that it's not been done in this district, and it should be articulated, that we have designated staff that can show up to the school in case of an emergency and act as the principal, and the substitute principal and substitute assistant principal would take the second hand in command, that's what that is about.
Uh, we were running like that, because I was, um, that's how we always go to it. Diane Morty, you can read this way, because she's in a module, like, what is our substitute?
We'll have a substitute principal.
Or would be substitute?
The, the, we can't discuss an individual employee, it's just the person acting, acting principal. Substitute principals will always, we will still always have them.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
My name is Denise Cipriano, something very simple. We were talking about studying seventy thousand dollars, if I'm correct, on, um, Bulte's correct and state exams, did I hear that correctly? And other things, for staff development days, teachers are used to correct tests. That could be a suggestion to, to eliminate the seventy thousand dollars. Another thing is, um, what happened to suggested reading lists for the kids? My kids, we see them every year, now they think because they're going to another school, they don't assist. One change, starting already. I mean, reading is the basis of everything, where, where's the hole there, what happened? If you can check down the reading department, whatever it is, you know, kids get motivated when it comes from the school, not from the parent.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, put on.
Sure.
Go ahead, sure.
Hi, I'm Sarah. Good evening, Carol Cardon. Um, it's just, I wanted to bring up about, um, this year, my fellow encountered, um, one of his classes, he was one of the five students, which obviously had a textbook. Um, it doesn't sound like a big deal, but to me, it was. So, I'm hoping that, um, unless you have your addresses, um, for love or want textbooks. I, I was willing, I had a known, I'd buy it myself, but, um, just wondering, um, why there was a shortage, um, uh, one of his textbooks this year? Um, and how, um, how you can help me with this? Any suggestions?
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Yes, perfect, thank you so much.
If anybody has an individual problem, that they would like to talk with any members of the board or the administration after the meeting, uh, please feel free to come up and speak with us. Also, the, you can call the district office to, uh, get in touch with the right person if you have a problem at any time, and we do have district emails, that you can also contact us, and we'll try to get back to you. So, um, please feel free to do that, I'm glad everybody likes to come up and talk with a microphone. So, that's available to you all, so.
This is just a reminder, the capital improvement committee meeting tomorrow, at ten o'clock, the Mission Brothers talk, twenty five corporate drive. So, if any member of the committee wants to be there, drop the gun.
Could I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Rubin, second, Mr. Selma, all in favor? Opposed?